Hi, good evening, everyone. And welcome to the Bennington Select Board Meeting of Monday, July 10. We are at the firehouse on the third floor. And for those of you who can't join us, and it's nice to see such a nice crowd. For those of us who can't join us, you can always watch on CAT TV. I am Jeanne Jenkins, and I have the pleasure of chairing this board. I'm going to ask my fellow board members to please introduce themselves, starting with Sarah.
Yes, good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Hi, I'm Gary Corey.
Good evening, my name is Jim Carroll.
Hi, I'm Tom Haley.
Hi, I'm Jean Conner.
I'm Ed Woods.
Thank you very much. And also with us tonight is Assistant Town Manager Dan Monks. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes for us at each meeting. Somewhere we have Jonah Spivak, who is, ah, okay, who will be taking care of PowerPoints and such, technology needs. And we have Josh Boucher on CAT TV camera as always, which we very much appreciate. Thank you very much. So we will begin tonight, as we always do, with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. And then, Tom, would you read the vision statement, which guides our work?
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. We have the minutes of June 26th and also the warrants. Any comments or questions that have not already been brought up with either Dan or Nancy?
I have a report.
Okay.
Dan, the warrants, there's the number 27, Report 27, and that's for last year. And then we start into this year.
Yes.
And on Report Number Two, there's a series of checks that were from June. Does that, how does that affect, or does it affect the budget?
Are you talking about the checks or the invoice date?
Oh, invoice date.
Yep. So there'll just be, need to be a journal entry showing those as being last fiscal year.
So they'll be written this year?
They'll be written this year, but anything that was incurred last year will be part of last year's actual expenses.
Okay. Great, thanks.
Good question. But it does, it makes it a fun time at the end of the year trying to deal with all that stuff.
For the finance director. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions, comments? Nope, seeing none. Could I, oh, yeah, forgot about this part. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, and a second?
And the warrants, right?
And the warrants.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, great. Thank you very much. Let's move on to public comment. A reminder on public comment, this is a time for the Select Board and the community to hear from the community. It's not a time for discussion. It is really for you to share information that is of value to everyone. The topic should not be related to an agenda item. If you want to speak on an agenda item, you'll be able to do that when that item comes up. Your comments should be three minutes or less, and you need to state your real name and town of residence. And if you have questions that, if you have questions, we will probably refer you to the appropriate staff person to talk with you at a later date about your questions, if it's not something that's coming up as an agenda item. So with that, Sam, you're up first. And your topic, so I do want to say something. The topics are becoming a little tougher to discern. I, it is, random three minutes really are not appropriate. Neither is leaving it blank. So in the future, I need you to say what the general area of concern and topic is. So that is, that's just a notice to everybody that has signed up tonight. All right, Sam, you're up.
Yeah, we got to say, Sam, from Bennington, Vermont. I'll try to narrow down a topic. It's kind of hard, simply because we have numerous topics in three minutes. A few weeks ago, we spoke about Gloria's presentation of the skate park, and that changed rather quickly because the following day on Tuesday, the People's Park was shut down. There was a protest. There was a CPAR meeting that took place Thursday. They had a protest prior to that, but some people could have showed up at the CPAR meeting to speak about what happened at People's Park. And then the following Monday, it opened back up. While we're on the subject of flooding, I'm wondering how our wonderful certified flood wall is doing along the Roaring Branch. Has that been taken care of, or is it still in need of repairs? Simply because when I was at that flood wall early this morning, I've noticed some sizable cracks that need to be addressed. Something that should be on the agenda item, the CTC building that needs to be addressed that I brought up at a prior Select Board meeting on Benmont Avenue. The list of committee members that were appointed should have been in the minutes, and Jonah corrected me on that, or going to be listed on that. Here we are in the month of July. The piano compass got painted. I surely thought the rest of the crosswalks would be painted as well on Main Street. I don't know why that's not happening. I think we're going to do those in August or September. Some members showed up at a Select Board meeting a few, a couple of weeks ago, speaking about a neighborhood watch. I asked on social media how to be a part of that group. Nobody seems to know how to contact those folks. Baptist Church or Northeast College on Convent Avenue, the dorms are still not finished yet. And I understand that MSK didn't design the sewer project of that project, and there's further expansion has to be done on that. Where do we stand on that issue of how come that project has not been finished yet? On a happier note, I spoke to people on Fantastic Friday that moved from Pennsylvania here into Bennington. They like what they see, and they're encouraging other people to come here to Bennington.
Thank you, Sam. All right, let's see. Next up is Jack Rossiter-Munley, speaking on refugee resettlement and Community Cafe.
Hello, I'm Jack Rossiter-Munley from Bennington, Vermont. And I am first here in my professional capacity, working for ECDC, which is the Refugee Resettlement Agency here in southern Vermont. And I am here because we had a very exciting event in this last week, which is that we had the first official refugee arrivals who came directly to Bennington. So many of you are probably aware that refugees have been resettled in Bennington County since 2021. But it was only in October of last year that Bennington was designated as an official resettlement site, and it was earlier this year that ECDC opened up its affiliate office here in town, and we had our first official arrivals coming directly to Bennington, with more anticipated to come throughout the summer, into the fall, and for years to come. So this is a really kind of exciting time. What that means is that we are also on the ground, literally preparing for people to come to town. So this is a note for everyone who's here today and everyone listening on CAT TV. It takes a community to help people build a new life in a new country after having everything taken away from them in the place where they lived their entire lives. That can be as huge as finding housing for somebody, and it can be as simple as making sure that they have toothbrushes, toothpaste, shampoo, and conditioner. So we are at ECDC looking for all kinds of different donations. Very specifically, we launched a program called the Bennington Mattress Squad. And that is because while many, many items, pretty much everything, can be donated before someone arrives to the United States, for reasons that you can imagine, mattresses and bed frames must be purchased new. So if you are perhaps able to purchase a mattress for someone, that can go a long way for them when they come to the United States, because otherwise, it has to come out of the finite amount of money that they come to the United States with to begin their resettlement experience. So if you're interested in helping out people who are coming to Bennington and are looking to start new lives, you can get in touch with me. And it's a lot of letters, but I'm going to give you my email address. Yeah, I know, it's a tough life out here for us hyphenated folks. I know most of my three minutes is gone, but I also have to mention the Community Cafe. I feel like I'm contractually obligated at this point. It's a program that happens every Saturday from 1:30 PM to 3:00 PM outside of 121 Depot Street here in Bennington, Vermont, better known to many of you as GBICs. And the last few weeks have been pretty exceptional. We have had over 60 meals served. We have had people from Bennington, North Bennington, a couple of Bennington College students who are here over the summer came down to check it out and see what the cafe was all about. They're potentially interested in volunteering with the cafe. And we have also had over a half dozen different kinds of instruments being played at the cafe as music becomes an increasing part of what we do. And we were visited by a local folk music group for some sing-along songs this past weekend. So it's a really positive time at the Community Cafe. If you're interested in that, it's a much simpler email address, benningtoncommunitycafe@gmail.com. Get in touch with us. We are always looking for food, for people to serve food, for people to come and hang out and have a good time at the cafe. It's open to all, and everything on the menu is pay what you choose. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Next up, we have Joey Culkin, speaking on Joey Culkin.
[laughing].
Okay.
Been away, I forgot protocol here. Hello. Joey Culkin, Bennington. I'm the Director of the Downtown Bennington Alliance, which I'm speaking about tonight. And I have one request, and then one little piece of news. And I want to start first by congratulating the BBC, Jean Montrone, Jenny Dewar, Susan Plastov, Mike McDonough, every, all the judges, everyone who came and made the banner project, the student art project, the success that it was. It's a great project. You all put in a lot of hard work, and you deserve all the credit. So thank you for making Main Street just 1,000 times better with all your hard work. I have a request. I'll try to make this quick, because I want to talk about these pencils, too. A few months ago, Ned Perkins came to the board and said the town loan program needed to be updated. It was unfair, not transparent. It would be nice if we can update our policy with town loans. And you made an agenda item, and Stu and Dan and the staff and Shannon came up with this presentation, and you altered the town loan program. Recently, you've begun to start the, include the warrants in the Select Board packets again, which is an awesome thing. Transparency to the bone. I know Ed, that was his big thing during the campaign, transparency, access to information. And now everyone knows how the town is spending its money without having to jump through hoops. I'm requesting an agenda item to discuss the merits of bringing back the DIC, the Downtown Improvement Commission. I'm not sure how many on the board know what that is. Dan might know, Stu definitely knows. It was a board about 20 years ago, made up of merchants on Main Street, and they took recommendations on how the DID Downtown Improvement District tax money would be spent every year. So on tonight's agenda, the BBC will get $94,000, and that's great, and they're going to use it for all these great projects. I'm asking about an agenda item, just to discuss how we could possibly bring back the DIC, so that we could take that off of the Select Board's plate and have that board again, that determines, that makes suggestions on how the annual tax, downtown tax money is spent. So that maybe the BBC could get $50,000, and Ed Woods LLC would get $10,000 for his great idea, and Tom Haley would get $8,000 for his idea. The point being that we live in the age of abundance now, and I think we could be sharing the wealth a little bit better. The DBA would love to tap into the DID money a little bit. We are the official welcome center of Main Street, Bennington. We're not saying we're the official organization, but we're on Main Street, and the world comes to us. And we tell folks, local and who come to Bennington, where to eat, where to drink, where to buy their weed, where to get their chocolate, go to the museum, go to the dollhouse museum. We have a river that cuts through town on a beautiful river walk. We send people onto Main Street and throughout the town of Bennington and beyond. And it'd be really nice if somehow there were ways for the DBA and other organizations to tap into this money, if there was a more fair and impartial, transparent board, taking that off your plate. So it would be great if we could have an agenda item to discuss this. And you might vote we don't need it again, but it's been 20 years. It'd be nice to revisit that. So that's my request. I would love an agenda item, and I would love to be part of the discussion on that. So I'm almost done. So one of the things we do at the DBA is we have a lot of raffles. The first two years of our existence, we sent winners of the first raffle to a fish show at Madison Square Garden in New York City on New Year's Eve. The second raffle, we sent newlyweds from North Bennington on a 12-night cruise to the Caribbean on the Queen Mary II. Dick Sears picked the ticket. It was one of the greatest stories ever told in Bennington. Then COVID hit, and we didn't do raffles. The last couple of years, we've been coming back. And instead of the big raffles, because resources are limited, we've been doing a series of smaller raffles. So I go into shops up and down Main Street, and I buy things. Coffee Shop, Vine and Branches, Bringing You Vermont, Fiddlehead, the museum. And we raffle these gift cards or really cool gifts away on our Facebook page. And all you have to do to enter our raffles is just like or love the post. Winners are chosen, they come in, I take a photo, and we tell a story. And it's a great way to promote our Main Street downtown businesses, locally and to the world. Our current raffle, I went to Gift Garden last week and bought 10 of these pencils. I'm going to hold one of them up for CAT TV, and we're picking five winners. So the Gift Garden is owned by Beth and Dwayne Willow. The Gift Garden has been hometown florist for 47 years. In his downtime, Dwayne whittles pencils. They sell for $3 apiece at Gift Garden. So I bought 10 of them. I'm going to pick five winners, two pencils each. All you have to do is go to the Downtown Bennington Alliance Facebook page. We've picked two winners, we're going to pick three more. In recent weeks, we've given away big chunks of marble. We've given away tickets to a show at the Monument Arts and Culture Center on Gypsy Lane. We go to all the shops, and we just, we buy stuff to raffle away and promote goodwill on Main Street. So if you want to win these last six pencils that are whittled by Dwayne Willow of Gift Garden, just go to the DBA Facebook page. And, you know, good luck in winning. And once again, I wanted to say thank you to the BBC for everything you do. And if there's any way the DBA could collaborate with you and help, we would love to partner in ways that benefit Main Street, but all of Bennington. So thank you.
Thank you, Joey. And last up today is Nancy White, talking about the Rec Center.
Nancy White, Bennington. I have many concerns about our Town Rec Center. I think many in Bennington and people from other towns who use our Rec Center will share the concerns. Back in January of 2022, you put out a report. It shows we need to do half a million dollars of work at the Rec Center. The only people in 50 years who have paid for the Rec Center are the town of Bennington taxpayers. We pay every budget, we pay every bill. When the voters approve a bond, the taxpayers of Bennington pay for it. The county, the region, the state, the Berkshires, New York, no one has helped us pay other than the people of Bennington. Can you get the work that needs to be done on the Rec Center on an agenda, to explain to the public what needs to be done and when it needs to be done? I'd also like to know how much money we have in the Pennies for Park Fund. Voters approved it over two years ago. We were going to use the money for the playground at Willow. We unexpectedly got the ARPA money that paid for it. So it's time for the taxpayers to get some help. We need to keep that Rec Center up. It's a major asset for Bennington. I noticed a few months ago that on the Town Website for Recreation, the schedule for the Rec Center is posted all the way through next year in June. And I noticed on Sundays, the Rec Center Pool is closed every single Sunday. This has not happened in the past. I know it's closed in the summertime on Sundays, but I believe the rest of the year it's open. For a lot of families, Sundays may be the only day they can go there. So I think you need to get on the agenda what the hours and days are going to be for the Rec Center, because that is tied to the Y agreement. Last, I don't recall United Counseling Services, the leadership, coming here to ask permission to run a program at our Town Rec Center. Last week, I saw online their advertising that they're running a program that anyone who needs a shower can go up to our Town Rec Center. I'd be interested to know if the Select Board is aware of this program.
We are, and we're not going to have a discussion right now. But yes, and it's part of a management agreement.
Okay. The leadership of UCS should have been in here. Our Recreation Center is not a Bennington County Social Services Center. I believe UCS has at least seven or eight buildings in the town of Bennington. They certainly could be using one of their buildings for this program. We have got to start treating that Rec Center like the schools treat the schools. The safety of the people at the Rec Center, especially children, need to be a priority. If we have homeless people in Bennington who are banned from certain businesses, I would question why you would want the same people up in the Rec Center. You know you have some people with very erratic behavior. They should not be up in the Rec Center. And again, this should have been a public discussion. People should have been able to speak out. People who have memberships or sending their kids there know nothing about it. We know none of the details. And I'd also like to know if UCS is getting grant money to do this. Their building is attached to our Town Rec Center. They should not be doing any programs at the Rec Center without public knowledge. And the public also needs to be aware. The only way you can get in and out of the Rec Center, everybody walks through the UCS building. And when you see the Y sitting at the desk, that is in the UCS building. So there's a lot of things going on at the Rec Center that the public isn't aware about, and we need to start having those discussions.
Thank you very much, Nancy. All right. Next up is the BBC Work Plan and Budget. And I...
Jean. Sure. I thought...
I have just a quick question. If I could, the other one would come in, but it's not an option. That's all.
Yeah, okay. Go ahead. Yep.
I am Jenny Dewar. I am the Director of Events for the Better Bennington Corporation.
Jeanne Montroni, Director of Operations.
In December, I made a proposal to my board to change the structure of staff at the BBC. At that point, I had served just over a year as Executive Director with an assistant for the first six months only. When my assistant went on to a different position, I decided to go it essentially on my own, so that I could really grasp all aspects of the job before hiring someone new. I wanted to have a better understanding of how and what to delegate. I came to a completely unexpected conclusion. This was no longer a director and an assistant with all the new directions we had taken, especially adding so many new events downtown. It made much more sense to split my position into co-directors, as well of, of course, one-of-the-kind, save-you-at-every-turn Bill Clark. We evaluated several different ideas and came up with the Director of Events and Director of Operations. To manage this fiscally, I offered to take a substantial pay cut. We combined the salaries of the exec and the assistant and then divided it in two, to make the jobs more sustainable, to better serve Bennington effectively, to not make that financially affect our downtown taxpayers. We acted quickly. We received over 30 applicants, and the Hiring Committee whittled it down to those that seemed to be the best candidates. When Jeanne Montroni walked out of the door after her interview, it was clear to everyone that our new director had just left the building, so much so that we just, they decided not to have a second round of interviews. Since Jeanne started, we have worked together to figure out who does what. She is the perfect partner, colleague, and friend. We work miraculously well together. Director of Events, I am responsible for all aspects of the events, from the negotiation to the logistics, to the planning, to the budget, to the bookkeeping, to the volunteers, to the day of. I also do all the upkeep and continuation of the database design and marketing, and the marketing. I handle the social media, the press releases, the newsletter, et cetera. I also act as the assistant to the Director of Operations. Director of Operations, Jeanne is responsible for the committees, the board meetings, the official downtown visitors center, and the docents, membership, grant writing, fundraising, sponsorships, merchant relations, and promotions. As the artistic one, she creates the ads and decides when and where to run them. She also acts as assistant to the Director of Events. It's still new, as Jeanne only came on board at the beginning of April, but she has hit the ground running. There is still some onboarding happening, of course, but she has a really great grasp of the organization and a passion for her work that is rare. Our positions are both autonomous and completely overlapping at the same time. Jeanne is going to speak about the Vermont Downtown Organizations and how the BBC is one of those 24, or how Bennington is one of those 24 downtowns. In order to have this designation, it is mandated to have an organization that is appointed to carry on that vision, and that is the Better Bennington Corporation. Your turn.
So I'll speak to the organizational chart, which had a slight change from last year. Instead of going from Board of Directors to Executive Director, as Jenny just said, is now co-directors. After being there for just a few months, I can completely see why this model is much better. The docents are reporting to me, and the volunteers for events are reporting to Jenny, and in between, we have Bill. And we couldn't do any of it without him. On the bottom, you'll see that there are four committees, and that is part of what we have to have as being a designated downtown and the four-point approach. Let's see, sorry. We are blessed to have the board members we do. Each is dedicated to the mission of the BBC and passionate about the future of the downtown. They allow us to work independently, but together as a team. J1 and J2 have become J squared on more than one occasion. The board is supportive of our endeavors. We currently have five highly capable candidates on the new board member ballot. Each will bring something unique to the table. They all have strong ties to the community and will be a diversified mix of people from our community, even adding downtown restaurant and merchant representation to the board. This one's a lot to absorb. This is all about Vermont downtowns and the BBC. The Vermont Downtown Program is a Main Street America coordinating program. There are so many benefits to Bennington being approved to be a designated downtown. I could spend a very long time going through all of these benefits, but instead, I will highlight just a few. First, are you even aware that this is a national program? I wasn't. It has a grassroots network consisting of over 40 coordinating programs in over 2,000 neighborhoods and communities across the country. It is a proven strategy which encourages communities to take steps to enact long-term change while also providing short-term, inexpensive activities to attract people to downtown. Jenny has done a great job of bringing culture, music, and activities to our town. Once designated, the, excuse me, the community becomes eligible for the following benefits. They become eligible for downtown and village center tax credits, downtown transportation fund, priority consideration for state grants, traffic calming and signage options, priority consideration by State Building and General Services, BGS, special assessment districts, Act 250, Neighborhood Development Area Eligibility, NDA. As you can see, Bennington is very fortunate to have this designation. Let's all work together to utilize every benefit and bring even more to our community. I tried to get fancy. So this is directly from the Main Street America program, and this is how the four points all become a community transformation. Without these four... Without these four very smart approaches, it wouldn't all come together. So at the BBC, our board has these four committees, which are Economic Vitality, Design, Organization, and Promotion, and each plays a vital role. I just went totally off-script. Sorry. When I started at the BBC, the entire program and the four-point approach were foreign to me. In my short time with the BBC, I realized the value and appreciate the efforts that have gone into this national program. There is so much I could go on, go into depth about, but I'll only share some of the most important highlights of the four points. The points are: Organization. This involves getting everyone working toward the same goal and assembling the appropriate human and financial resources to implement a Main Street revitalization program. A government board and standing committee make up the fundamental organizational structure of the volunteer-driven program. Volunteers are coordinated and supported by paid program directors as well. This method divides the workload and clearly delineates responsibilities and also builds consensus and cooperation among the various stakeholders. This committee works to create an inviting atmosphere, created through attractive window displays, parking areas, building improvements, street furniture, signs, sidewalks, streetlights, landscaping. It all conveys a positive visual message about the commercial district and what it has to offer. These activities and more improve consumer and investor confidence in the district and encourage commercial activity in the investment in the area. Design. I have to point out that McD is an amazing committee chair. He was instrumental behind the Banner Project.
Did a...
Yeah. So the Design Committee works to get our downtown area into top physical shape, capitalizes on its assets, which include historic buildings and pedestrian, pedestrian-oriented streets. The committee works to create an inviting atmosphere through attractive window displays, parking areas, building improvements, street furniture, signs, some of the same as before, sidewalks, streetlights, and landscaping, even pocket parks, all of which convey a positive visual message about the commercial district and what it has to offer. Economic vitality. This strengthens a community's existing economic assets while expanding and diversifying its economic base. This helps in converting unused or underused commercial space into economically productive property and also helps boost the profitability of the district, and we all know that is This is our certificate, and it speaks to itself. I think, when I first saw that we had this, I think this is something that should be displayed. I mean, it's, it's something we should be very proud of, and where we may have four entrances into our town and signage, this would be a nice addition. Not everybody knows about the program, but we should be really, really proud of what we've accomplished by being a part of it. So as I was talking about the four points earlier, this is the BBC's committees. They are exactly the same.
...
It's okay. And each, each has to create a work plan for the following year. The Select Board has the full select, excuse me, plans. We did a brief, brief overview of it here. But as I read about what these, these committees do, they work very hard, and they put a lot into their plans, and it is what keeps us going forward. A little video for you from Main Street America. Can everybody see?
She's not coming up, so we're gonna do the other version.
Oh, she's not coming in.
I don't know.
Oh, there it is. I had to talk with her about this earlier.
Jonah? We'll do it with the YouTube.
Extraordinarily important because it provides people with a path that they can adapt to their particular needs. They have the really comfort of knowing that this has worked for many, many other communities. The four-point approach includes design, which is a focus on putting into active use older and historic buildings that make up many of our downtowns and neighborhood commercial districts. We focus on organization, which is creating strong and healthy organizations with a sustainable funding stream to support downtown revitalization efforts. Promotions, which are really all about marketing the downtown, making sure the community, making sure those outside the community know about all the great things that are downtown. And finally, economic vitality, which is really about making sure that there's a strong mix of businesses, cultural institutions, and housing that support that overall vision for downtown.
It really is an amazing program.
Women are making money from home without the headaches and drugs.
One thing I'm hoping to do is travel around Vermont and look at the other 13 designated downtowns and see what they've done. Because this is all new to me, I want to really get a feel for what other communities have done, which I think will help us, because there's some really great ones out there. And now I'm turning it over to Jenny.
So this is about sharing information. Getting the word out to people is a constant battle, for lack of a better word, a constant refrain. I didn't know. Where do you advertise? What's going on? Why don't you do a better job advertising? I ask. Do you read the paper? No. Are you on Facebook? No. Do you look at the kiosk? No. Have you downloaded districts? No. Do you look at our website? No. Then I want to bang my head against a wall. But since I really don't like concussions, I have them take out their mobile. Almost everyone has a smartphone now. I have them go to our website, and I have them sign up. Voila! Now they will receive the newsletters that I send out telling them what's going on. So I'm gonna wait 10 seconds while you all take out your mobiles to go to www.betterbennington.com and sign up for the newsletter. I actually mean you can take your phones out and do that now, or later. Word of mouth is also really helpful. So please tell two friends and do the same, and so on, and so on. I'm old. An example of a great story via sharing information on Facebook is the birth of the Benny the Caterpillar. More on that in the coming weeks. You want to hear about it? Sign up for the newsletter. I do want to talk about, a bit about a new app called Districts. That's D-I-S-T-R-X, another one to download tonight. Go to the App Store if you're on your mobile, and if you're on your computer, go to districts.com. It's free to sign up. Several months ago, I received an email from the Districts folks. They have been rolling out the app all over the country. They did their due diligence and saw that BBC is the official downtown organization. This was verified by Gary Holloway from the Vermont Downtown Organizations that Jeannie was talking about, and we were gifted with this wonderful app. Initially, it is yet another way to see what businesses are downtown. That was nice, but we have several websites with the same information. Where Districts becomes valuable is sharing vendor locations and information for big festivals. I launched it for MayFest, and it was super cool watching people using it to find their favorite vendors. Where it became extremely valuable was using it to map out the student street banners that I will talk about a little bit later. Where I hope to make it wonderfully valuable is utilizing the tours and activities. I had to rehearse that several times. And activities piece of the app. We can create walking tours with scheduled stops with recorded stories via the app. Cool, right? But that takes money, quite a bit of money, so that is hopefully down the road. Anyway, we are always trying to come up with new ideas. If you have a suggestion aside from illegal billboards, feel free to let me know what you look to find out what's going on. And now, what's been going on? MayFest came back last year with a bang post-pandemic, so this year I wanted an explosion. We had 125 vendors compared to 80 last year. It was packed with people. I added the Young Entrepreneur Vendors Corner for kids age 13 and under. I drafted a huge map to scale out, to scale, to lay out the vendors that can be reused for eternity. People have no idea what goes into these large events, but my job is to make it look easy and effortless and fun. My job is to create fun for others. Isn't always fun doing the creating? No, it's a lot of work, but I like my work. I'm one of the lucky ones who actually does like my work. We should all be so lucky. If you don't, find another job. We should all feel good about our work. It's always good to learn as you go along. What did I learn this time? Pleasant Street did not work for the food vendors. I extended them all a discount for their next festival and spent sleepless nights trying to figure it out. School Street is now narrower, so you can't have them on either side, or you're gonna really clog up the center. It doesn't work the way it used to. And the solution finally came to me in the middle of one of those sleepless nights. Come to Harvest Fest on October 14th to see how the stickers now rearranged on the map will look like in real life. We introduced Harvest Fest in October 2022. Was I crazy adding a second huge festival? Yes. Was it worth it? Absolutely. Part of it was financially motivated. A couple of big things happened with MayFest 2022. We now have to pay the police a big chunk of change for security. I get it, they need to get paid too. And so do musicians. They had pretty much just offered busking opportunities in the past, and as I have said until I'm blue in the face, artists should not be expected to give away their art unless they volunteer to do so. So I offered to pay them as they should be paid. What did this mean? Our bottom line shrank. So a second festival not only brings great joy to the town, it also is fiscally necessary for our budget. I didn't want a MayFest copycat, so I created more of a focus on activities and food than on crafters. There's room for both, of course, but we had pumpkin painting, a bouncy house, competitions, raffles, a photo booth, tastings, and more. It was so great that we're doing it again. We also introduced Thursday Night Live last year. We received a grant from the Better Places, from Better Places and raised $5,000 via crowdfunding to be matched with $10,000 from the state. Along with sponsors and donors, we were able to present a 19-week free entertainment series, mostly music but not all, in Merchants Park. I wanted to focus on bringing in different performers than people usually see on the Bennington stages, so I brought people in from all over. We had jazz, and classical, and drumming, and spoken word, and marimba. We also had some fantastic local bands. We had the Middle Eastern Ensemble from Bennington College. It was quite the summer. This year, I had to get a little creative without the grant and the funding, so I only planned for seven Thursday Night Lives. One has already gotten washed out with the rain, the soggy summer of 2023, but they are going to play at Harvest Fest instead. We started out with Sakumuu, an African dance music ensemble, and it was spectacular. It was individually sponsored by an anonymous donor, and we are grateful. Karaoke was fun and didn't cost a lot. We have three more: prescription with side effect horns, Bennington's Got Talent Redux, and we will close the series with a silent disco. We have two DJs and have rented 150 headphones for the evening. People can choose which music to dance to. Anyone watching? They hear nothing. It's magic. This one is not cheap, so we are doing 50/50s at all our events to raise the money already committed to this super cool event. And another new venture is also financing it. That venture? I had the first pop-up shop for a week in December. The festivals get to come, get people to come downtown to shop, so how about killing three birds with one stone? Provide a place for vendors when they don't have summer festivals, fairs, and markets? Promote all the merchants downtown at the pop-up? Make a little more money for that pesky bottom line. What did I learn? A week was too long. However, there was enough success that we tried it again for Valentine's Day for three days. This went really well, but the biggest day was the Saturday. So, listening to the lesson, we started doing weekly on Saturdays in March. Practice makes perfect. Still seeking that perfection, but getting closer and closer, I think, I hope. We went through to May, and it started to slow down. Realizing that the season had begun, I decided to do them in conjunction with other events for the summer and reevaluated, reevaluate come fall. So the next one will be on Thursday, July 20th. Why? Midnight Madness. Everyone knows what that is, right? So I'm not even gonna talk about it, because you're all just gonna be there shopping July 20th. Partnering with other organizations is something we love to do at BBC. I remembered that Bennington had once had a townwide tag sale, and I hoped to revive it. So I did. I reached out to the two libraries, Bennington Free Library and John G. McCullough Free Library, to get to the source, and a beautiful relationship was born. The BBC sponsored all the marketing, logistics, and planning while we all promoted to our various folks and collected the fees and the applications. 2022 was a huge success with over 50 tag sales in two days. We have changed it to one day only this year and have 29 sales so far. There is still time to sign up. Just go to our website that you downloaded earlier and visit the event page and download the application. It's on July 22nd, and the money goes towards the advertising and the police. The sales will be listed on Facebook, Districts, our website, and with a full page in that day's Bennington banner. This is not a moneymaker, but it gets people out and about and downtown. Another partnership that we value immensely is Hemmings. When Jen Sandquist approached me last year about bringing the Cruisin's to downtown, I nearly left off my, off my chair with joy, and I had no idea. This year, they've increased it to five. We are so lucky to have this amazing event once a month right on Main Street. For the second year in a row, we did a bit of behind-the-scenes work for the Vermont Arts Exchange, who produced another incredibly successful, highly-attended concert with Alex Torres. We are grateful that Matthew Perry includes us in this hugely anticipated summer event, and especially to the weather goddess for letting us sweat without the rain. We can't do any of this without these incredible human beings. I, I can't, I'm not gonna read through all of it, but they're invaluable. If you want to volunteer for any of our events, email me at events@betterbennington.com. Back to Jean. E. Spelled Jean, it's Jeannie. Unlike Gene, Jeannie, Jean.
Three of us in one room, all spelled and said differently, right? Okay, so I am now to sponsors. So I take raising money really seriously, and that is, has probably been instilled in me from working in the Development Department at the hospital. And I think that the BBC can just go further and further with money that we can actually bring in on our own through sponsorships, donations, and getting creative with memberships. So within my first month there, I put out a mailing to 124 businesses. They're not all on here because some are under these levels. They're just as important as the platinum level, because every dollar counts. Heritage Family Credit Union came in at the platinum level, just $4,000 or above. They literally just sent a check, and I met with them afterwards. And I think it's going to be a great partnership. They're very community-oriented, and it is our sponsors that are gonna make everything we do possible, and we won't need to get money from other resources. So I think it's very important. We even had donations coming in from, you know, regular private citizens. I am still on this, and it will be a campaign every year so that we can hopefully just keep building on it and have more and more. Let's see. I told you I went off-script there, probably forgot a couple things here. Oh, let me just back up. I will be working on memberships. I'm gonna try to get creative, and instead of just having DID memberships and extended DID memberships, I think it would be really nice to have like social memberships where people recognize how much is going on for the community from the BBC, and they want to be a part of supporting that. So they make a donation, but through like a membership, which I'm still trying to create how that will look. But I think people feel good when they support something, but they also feel good when they're a member of something. So this is something I'm really gonna hit the ground running on now that this is behind us, will be behind us. The docents. Our downtown visitor center is crucial in my eyes. We, I'm gonna try to go back on-script a little about this. Sorry. Okay. So the downtown center falls under my duties. With the many years of hospitality experience, I am excited about being the designated visitor center for downtown Bennington. I hope to see our docent list grow so we can cover additional days, like the weekends when tourists are here. Right now, I am almost full with the 10 that I needed, so if you know anybody, I'm desperately looking for two more. We are the first point of contact for all those traveling north from the south. We want to be visible, we want to be inviting, we want people to know that we are there and to stop. We had a bus stop by. We didn't know it was coming, but it was wonderful because those people could not wait to get off the bus and use their bathroom. But while they were there, it was great to engage with them. They were from Ohio. They were from Ohio, they hadn't been here. There was so much we were able to tell them, and even the tour guides. So it was a great experience. I've had docent meetings where they already have these qualities, but I just really want to instill in them how important it is to be pleasant, warm, welcoming, and informative. We are fortunate to have a wonderful group of volunteer docents, and I hope we can add to it. We are also really good about sending visitors to all types of places in our town. No matter what they're looking for, we send them there. And sometimes we send them to places they've never heard of, because we talk to them and feel them out, kind of what they're really looking for. And I think it's important that we are there, and that building draws people in itself because it's just, it's beautiful and historical. Promotions. So this was hard, because I drew a blank when I went to writing, but Jenny knows I am constantly thinking of things and throwing them out there, but I need to learn to write them down. There are so many things I think that we can do to promote our town. Couple of these things have already been done, but window competitions. I would love to see how we've had the moose in the past, but instead have it be Adirondack chairs, maybe even supersized Adirondack chairs. I just think people would stop on Main Street because they would want to sit in them, and then they might shop, or go into our restaurants, where maybe they would have passed through otherwise. We were just contacted by an organization that wants to do painted quilts instead of actual quilting, and they are quilters, but they want to do their quilts on boards painted and have them displayed throughout our town. I think that would be a huge draw, because the quilting world is full of people. And as you know, probably if you've ever gone to the quilt fest at the high school, it is always packed. So I think that would be a big draw, especially if we could coordinate it with something like that. Since, okay, so in my interview, one of the things I just blurted out, one of those ideas that just came to my head was, it's not just downtown, it's our town. And it's now kind of become our model, because it is our town. You may not have a business in downtown. You may shop at them, but you may not be like economically involved in it. We have to consider it our town, and it has to be everybody who wants to see this succeed. So that's where I'm going. I'm going to keep pushing that. We now have bags with that on it if anybody is interested. Okay.
My turn.
Back to Jenny.
One of my personal favorite accomplishments via the BBC this year was the unveiling of the student art street banners. This seriously became a full-time job for Jeannie and me in the last couple of weeks. Where to begin? The idea was born months ago in a design committee meeting. We had the idea to do a whole new set of street banners using student artists. We had several meetings to iron out the details of the idea. Finally, we were ready to launch. The application was created and the model was set, but we needed funding. Luckily, Better Places announced a second launch, and I pounced. You cannot use the same project with this crowdfunding match program, so Thursday Night Live was not an option. I went through the process of creating the patronicity page and setting our budget and goals. I was incredibly optimistic since Thursday Night Live raised the money in two weeks. Six weeks? No problem, I said. We only need to raise 4,500 this time. So we launched the application for the art at the same time. Committee members went to all the schools to drop off the information. I created the website page, I launched the press release, and off we went. In came a few donations in the first couple of days. Yes, this was happening, I said. Jeannie was on board by this time. We both donated immediately and were as confident as one can be. Then, crickets. No more money rolling in. So, Jeannie and I both did direct emailing to everyone we knew. We tried to get the word out every way possible. Some more money rolled in. We were about halfway there, and then, crickets. Meanwhile, we were determined this was going to happen, and we had not yet seen any artwork. Jeannie spent days calling every school and visiting several in person. I was not worried about the art. I was terribly worried about the money. Around week four or five, Susan Plaisance, our beautiful chair, stepped up to the plate and emailed everyone she knew, and she knows everybody. And then the funds started rolling in again. And then, crickets. We were about $900 from our needed goal. If we didn't make the money, we didn't have a project. And now people were starting to respond with the art. I would say a bad word, but I'd just say gulp. Then a goddess in shining armor came swooping in. Val Harrington asked Susan, "What do you need?" Susan told her. And then bam, our funding was completed by Coggins. We may have done some happy dancing and squealing in the office when that happened. And then the art started pouring in, and the next phase of planning was going. Jeannie spent hours organizing and labeling the art. She made the arrangements with Michael McDonough for the judges to come in and select the winners. By now we were well past our planned deadline for the celebration. So after much discussion, we finally all came to the agreement that we would do it at July's First Friday event. Oh yeah, another new monthly event. Forgot to mention that one. Pickleball court, cornhole musicians, hula hoops, and at the last minute, the launch of a new rock painting project. Want to know more? Check that website and watch for the newsletter. The winners were chosen, and then we realized that the applications were missing a line for an email address. Who had time to make phone calls? We looked at each other. We were also trying to prepare the budget and presentation for tonight. The docents, we yelled at the same time. So our hero docents made phone call after phone call, while we got the art to GBH to create the banners, got all the other art to GBH to scan so we can put it on the website when things quiet down, made arrangements for all the artwork to be displayed gallery style at Mission City, made $4,800 worth of downtown dollars that will infuse money into downtown. So the kids all received $100 downtown dollars, and we had 48 winners. So they all received $48, I mean, they all received $100, which comes to $4,800. And what did they do on Friday? They went shopping. And we organized the prizes to go with the speeches. We arranged an ice cream deal with Bringing You Vermont. Thank you to Heather for the $3 per scoop deal. We made 125 ice cream coupons, made spreadsheet after spreadsheet with all the info, worked on the grant budget as we have to account for every penny, planned all the stuff to bring to Main Street, planned First Fridays, wrote press releases, did an enormous social media push, labeled every banner so we knew the artist and location, put every single kid and their banner location into the Districts app, made sure Bill was drinking a reservoir of water while putting up the banners in 95-degree weather last week, dragged everything over to Main Street, Bill did the heavier lifting, but thanks to Jeannie for coming up with the idea to get a cart. Set up the new pickleball court. I thank you, thanks to the folks who came and helped me when they saw me struggling and melting. Prepped the tent and table for the ceremony, stuffed pizza into our mouths, and then tried to appear calm, cool, and collected during the magnificent ceremony that made every single part of this worthwhile. Budget bottom line? Zero. Heart bottom line? Not even measurable. And now, the budget.
So I know that was all a lot for everybody to digest, but I think it's important that everyone knows how much really goes into it. I know a lot of you do, but maybe a lot on TV don't. And it is, it takes a lot. And now I really know it. Now I did not know it before. So, the budget. I know that's what you've all been waiting for. And since I'm out of time, I guess I can't present it, right? There's the smile. Okay, so here it is. So you can see last year what was projected and what was actual. We were only over by $681, which is really pretty amazing considering everything just keeps going up. We all know that. So it was really well-planned. Jenny did it her like first couple months here, and now I've walked into this with most of the planning already being done. So thank you, Jenny, for that. So now if we look at our projected for '23-'24, you can see the bottom line is 203,993. But the part that we look at for the select board is the 94,493, which is actually only a difference over last year, $4,109. When you look at the inflation index, just everything, that is not that much. I mean, it is if I had to pay it, but it's really not. We had a very large increase in the police. We have to pay them per officer, per hour, for anything over 75 attendees, and then they determine how many we have to have there. And they're wonderful, and we don't mind paying it, but it was a very huge increase. It went from $45 to $68.
In a year.
In a year. So that is a drastic increase. And then we took a, we did not ask for a raise, because that should not come out of anybody in the DID. There's a small cost of living increase, and what am I forgetting? And that's really it. And it comes to a difference of $4,109. I like looking at numbers. I'm a big number person, but I love graphs. So I did this, for those of you who like graphs, because it really shows where things are. Total payroll expense on the left, and then you can see what that is comprised of and what percentage of it it is. The whole thing comes to payroll expense of 133, 436, which is part of an expense that goes into the budget. Projected all expenses. There's a lot of other things. There's the payroll expense which we just talked about, program expense, event expense, marketing expense, the police, which is now higher, and all other operating expense, which brings it to 203,993. And you again, I mean, I think, I don't know if anybody else knows, but visually, it's a little easier to understand where things fall when you look at it that way.
I'm just going to pop in. Payroll expense does not just mean our salaries. It means all the money we're paying out to other people's salaries.
Next is, which one? So here we are showing our projected income, the money that we're having come in to help us do what we do. So there's membership dues. I estimated low on that one. I'm hoping that increases a lot. And again, membership and sponsorships and grants are going to offset a lot of this, and hopefully will be larger than what I have set for goals here. The downtown improvement district funding at 94,493. Sponsorships at 10, I'm more than, actually, I'm two-thirds of the way there already. Donations, we're very close to that, too. Grants, now that this is going to be behind us, that is my next focus. Contract employee is?
Bill.
Bill. And then we have the state funding, which is, we don't know if that's going to happen or not. It's in the governor's budget, and if it does, it's going to all the designated downtowns. To say anything to that? So here, it just shows again, let's see, total funding. It's just another way to look at it, to break it down. Sorry. Is there another one? So the bottom line is like we're really supposed to get to zero at the end of the budget between expenses and income. And this shows that what we have projected does that. That's my last slide. Now, let's all say it.
Remember, it's not just downtown.
It's our town. So, questions?
Yes, so we'll start with the board. Any questions from the board? So you can ask, we can ask questions on the full budget, but what we, what we control of this is the DID funding.
Can you go back to the funding source page that we were just on? Income. Contract employee is under income?
Yeah, so we pay it, the town gives us the money and we pay it out. So it balances each other in the income and expenses.
So it's, you've included it in expenses and you collected from the town?
Yeah, yeah. The one thing, so the town pays the actual salary for him, but we pay the worker's comp, the liability insurance, all the other stuff that comes with it. Yeah, out of our, out of our budget.
Thank you.
No, that's okay, I'm glad you did. Did you find it helpful to have it this way, by any chance?
Very.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
I have one question. Last year you projected 4,500, almost 4,600 in membership dues, but you only had 300.
Yeah.
Do you know why?
Yeah, because I, as a sole person running it, I didn't have time to do a big membership drive. It's one of the reasons that I wanted to bring on a partner that would, that's part of her job. So we also went down in the membership amount, because last year we changed that the DID used, anyone who wanted to be a voting member or a member in any capacity had to pay a membership fee, and I felt that that wasn't right, since it felt like double-dipping, since the DID taxes already pay that. And so the board agreed that we stopped collecting membership from them.
Okay, thank you.
So can you talk a little bit more about, so if you're a member of the DID, if you're in the, member of the DID already, then you don't pay fee, you don't pay a membership fee anymore. So who, I see, I mean, you're projecting a more modest number for the membership dues, but who do you see being attracted to do that?
Yeah, that's part of what I was talking about, like creating a social-type membership. So that, and I really do think from my former, my other former job, people really do want to support things that they engage in when they, when they realize that there's an opportunity to do that. So I want to create a plan so that it is appealing to people, and then it'll almost be like a campaign put out to the community far and wide. I mean, we have people coming here from Manchester, Arlington, we may be Bennington, but people are coming here for our events. And, you know, for them, giving $50 to know this is going to continue, or $100, is probably something they'll want to do. So it's at 1,000, I'm really optimistic. I'm going to say we're going to do it.
And also, there's the, what we create, the extended downtown, who are not in the DID, not in the district, but we still consider them to be part of downtown. So there's a membership fee for them to receive the same benefits. And I did check with the districts folk today, and even though districts is geared towards downtown specifically, they said it's perfectly okay if we list any corporate members like Naughty Pine would be in the district app. And, that lost my train of thought. Oh, and obviously on the website and everywhere else. Yeah.
Other questions? Yeah.
I'm just curious, as far as being, I forget exactly what the term was, a designated downtown, is that a one-time?
Sorry, did everybody hear me? Is that a one-time designation, or are you required every five years to re-up it? Okay, you have to go through?
We have to provide a whole, there's a pretty extensive reporting to the downtown organizations upstate to retain the designation.
I assumed that was the case, but I didn't know.
Is that a year, is that a yearly?
Every year, yeah.
Every year?
Every year.
Wow, that's a lot.
Yeah, I was going to say, it's every four years.
No, I fill out a form. I fill out a very extensive form. Every four years we're reevaluated, but every year I have to send them all kinds of, well, Jeannie has to send them all kinds of numbers and stats of what's been happening in Bennington and downtown.
For anyone out there who's listening, what, can you give us a sense of what the time commitment is to become a docent?
Yeah, so the docents that we have now, they come in for a three-hour shift. Right now we have 10 to 1, or 1 to 4, and some days are slower than others, other days are very busy. Most of the people who are volunteering are either from here or know the area really well, which I think is important. But if someone is new to the area, I'd be happy to help them. Even the other docents have mentioned if there's somebody new that they will let them shadow them. So it's a small commitment. I would really, like I said, love to see it go into Saturday, even if it was Tuesday through Saturday, because Monday's very slow. But I haven't had anybody commit to a weekend yet.
Okay. When you were talking about the Adirondack chair idea, I was remembering, and Gary, you in particular will remember this, there was a sculpture. Does anybody remember?
I've heard about that.
The bronze sculptures? They were, oh my gosh, that was amazing. So anyway, just revisit that idea.
Were they human figures or something?
Well, Roth, Roth Sternberg actually brought that. Roth.
Lawnmower man.
Window cleaner.
Lawnmower man. So they were human, they were?
Life-size, life-size. Like there was, um, out in front of Hawkins House, they were sitting on a bench, reading the newspaper. Gary had a guy standing mowing a lawn. Those are the two that I'm remembering, but there were, I don't know, twenty, thirty of them?
And all different businesses, we would sponsor them, and they stayed out for several months.
Yeah.
Wonderful setting because anytime we came into the community, we saw our town cars, locals, all the staff, we'd take them pictures.
And there was a map, you know, you could go around and find?
Districts!
Yeah, it was really cool. And I don't need to tell you this, Ms. Mantroni, but memberships, you could do levels.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yes.
That's all.
Definitely.
I don't like numbers as much as the story, but you can tell by my questions. Other questions from the board?
I remember we had talked about possibly revisiting the structure of tax, taxing again. I don't know if that's something we should review. The, you're saying that's, you know, it's not down, it's, can you repeat that again?
Oh, it's not just downtown, it's our tax?
Yes, thank you.
So you mean restructuring from the DID to the general fund?
So, you know, you guys brought a proposal forward last year to spread the tax throughout, basically to make it a town-wide tax. So we would have to revisit that, that's not for this budget.
Neither of us were here for that, but it, so it was prior to us, us coming on board, but it was just at the tail end of that when I started.
It fits with the motto, though, does it not?
Yeah. And the conversation kind of came to a halt at that time, and I, I agreed with that because I was like, I'm brand new, like, give me a chance and now give us a chance to show, you know, what, what we're doing.
Yeah.
Events really are for everyone.
Yeah, right.
You know, that might be a good strategy, is it that? And I think for me, raising it doesn't really fit the businesses at this point in time, so...
Raising what?
Raising taxes, it means, what is it, having trouble?
It's only four thousand dollars.
Yeah, maybe raising it just a little bit, you can, maybe if you're interested, they can't raise it at all.
Well, on that note, can you talk a little bit about, I know that this is outside of what we're talking about tonight, but the state funding, which is going into salary. So one of the, I think your note in here said, we're hoping the state funding comes through so that we don't have to increase?
Yeah.
The DID?
Yeah.
Tax, and twenty thousand dollar increase would be pretty significant.
So as I said from the beginning, I took a substantial pay cut when I proposed this. I took a twenty thousand dollar pay cut. And, um, so we are each making under forty thousand dollars a year. And for the work we put in compared to other organizations who are probably making sixty-seven B-plus, the governor's budget, if it happens, would, could, if our board agrees to it, could give us each a ten thousand dollar bump, which would bring us to under fifty thousand dollars. So, um, you know, this all came with the idea that we would each be working more part-time, like a thirty-two hour week. That is yet to happen. We are both working full-time, plus some. We both worked all weekend, for example. So, and all the events are on weekends and so it hasn't gone down at all.
So what happens, what happens to your budget, though? It doesn't balance if that happens?
It's in the budget.
But it, we don't know?
It's twenty in, twenty out. It's, it budgets, it goes to zero.
Because?
Because we put it, if, if it did come in, we, for, for the point of just putting it in a?
Where is it on the expense?
Salaries under, it's?
Salaries.
I can't.
It goes in A after it. So here's the, there's that.
Yeah.
And then there's.
Got it, okay, okay, all right. So it would just come out if you don't get the?
Exactly.
Okay, okay. Other questions from the board?
I have one. Speaking about taxes, do you have an idea of what this four thousand dollars would do to taxes, like per one thousand valuation?
That would be a town manager.
So right now the downtown improvement district tax rate is point two-five-six-seven per one hundred dollars. So if you were to fund, fully fund the request, the additional four thousand plus, it would go up by about a penny to point two-six-eight-four per one hundred dollars. So just to kind of give, so right now, per a hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, you'd pay two hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy cents. That would go up to two hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty cents per one hundred thousand dollars of value for commercial property. Remember, this only applies to the portion of a property that is commercial, it does not apply to residential property. And so let's say you have a building with three stories, two of them are residential, one of them is commercial, we have a pretty simple, we just make it really simple, you know, thirty-three percent of that is commercial and sixty-six percent is, is residential. So that's how that's done.
So it's just under, how, just under a few dollars, or what did you say?
It's, it goes up from, well, it depends on the value, obviously. It goes up by about a penny. So it goes from two hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy cents per a hundred thousand dollars of value to two hundred sixty-eight dollars and forty cents per a hundred thousand dollars.
So that's a, that's just once a year, so it's under ten dollars?
Yeah, so per a hundred thousand. So you can look at it all kinds of different ways. It's essentially a four-point-five-four percent increase. So it's under five percent, well, under five percent increase, but that's, those are the numbers.
Other questions from the board?
And I checked those with Melissa, that's how I know they're right.
I, I, you said it with authority. I was impressed. Okay, questions from the audience? Yes, Sam? If you don't mind. And again, try and keep your questions clear and as close to three, well, relevant, obviously, but also three, under three minutes.
I'm aware of the stipulations. Sam Bernstein of Bennington, Vermont. Correct me if I'm wrong, BBC is, is considered nonprofit, or?
Not just considered, it is nonprofit. It is, it is not, we are a five-to-one C three.
Okay. So as far as fundraising, you can't, is there a way of doing fundraising besides grants and from the state of Vermont? Can you work it around, so say if a, if a private citizen did a fundraiser and made a donation?
Public donation?
Yeah, public, could you work it that way?
Of course. We take donations every day.
A lot of people have a love of chicken. Would you object doing a chicken barbecue along with your Heimlich's cruise night, on one night a month? And have a raffle? You've got a lot of people that are out there.
Sam, you can suggest that a chicken raffle might be something to consider, but they're not gonna, on the spot, they shouldn't have to decide whether to?
It's a simple question. Do you want the money or don't you?
Sam, Sam, thank you, thank you. Other questions? Yes, Joey?
Happy barbecue. Joey Colkin, Bennington, director of the Downtown Bennington Alliance. That was a nice presentation, Ben and Jean. So in a town like Bennington, you have to take your successes the best way you can, whenever you can. And it was a nice way for the Jays to introduce the districts app.
So Joey, Joey, this is a question, if you have questions for the presenters, this is a time?
Well, it's more of a statement of fact, I guess.
Well, I, I think this is a time for you to ask questions of the presenters. If, if your question is a, is a clarification of fact, then that's fine, you just address it to Jeannie and Jim.
Right, I'm just trying to say that the districts app, that is, I, I know that they're gonna handle with love and care and make it great, was brought to the town of Bennington by the DBA Research, and so we're just trying to take our little success. We saw districts on here, and it's gonna become a big thing, and we would just like to say the DBA, we did the research for it, and through a set of circumstances, it came to the BBC. So the districts app is very important, we would love to see it grow, and we just wanna say that the DBA played a sma, well, the original part in it. And again, if there's a way to collaborate with the app, we would love to, but we just wanna get on record, and we would love to see it reflected in the minutes, that the DBA brought districts to Bennington, and that the BBC is now gonna run it to do great things with it.
Great, thank you.
I'm just gonna say, since he brought that up, what happened was, I received an email from the districts folk that included both of us, asking what our relationship was, because he had presented himself as being the official downtown organization. And I said, we don't really have a relationship, we are the downtown designated organization, which is what districts has been developed for. And then after Gary and Susan piped in, the districts folks decided that actually it was our app.
Okay.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions? Yes. Nancy?
Can you deliver a word?
And I'm gonna remind people that please don't have outbursts during the?
Nancy White, please just clarify, when you're talking about a tax and raising it, you're talking the properties in the DID and the property owners in the DID would pay that tax?
Yes, only commercial, not the, not private residents.
But I'm saying, it wouldn't come onto the rest of us in Bennington?
No.
No, okay, no, that's just what I wanted to clarify. I think it was twenty years ago or longer, they started a facade program for their downtown buildings. The Bennington taxpayers paid for that. Are we still paying for that, and how much are we paying per building?
So I can address the facade program?
Thank you.
It was a program many, many years ago, and it's actually pretty successful, and I know that Michael McDonough played a role in that as well. That is not currently a program. I believe it was funded, it was funded by a grant, and those funds long ago were expended. But it was a good program and certainly would be worth considering.
I thought we were paying six thousand a building, I just hadn't heard about it, so I didn't know.
I'm quite sure it was grant-funded, it was not.
We don't do it anymore. When the town took out the parking meters, again, I think it was twenty-five, thirty years ago.
Wait, so these are, again, this is a question?
This, this does go to the BBC?
So, so the people that will answer you are the BBC. This really isn't a Dan for select board piece.
Well, I don't want, what am I, you want to just say them on the?
No, you can, but I'm just making sure you're?
This is, this is select board, town, and BBC. The meters were taken out to try to encourage people to start going to the downtown again. But the public and the downtown business owners were promised that a system would be come up with, so that somebody wouldn't park their car, walk five buildings down, and go to work in a different shop and leave their car on Main Street all day. That was an issue with the meters. Somebody would leave their car and just go out and feed money all day, and they would take up a space because they were working in a different shop. I think what they had talked about doing was chalking the cars, but nobody has come up with a system. Is there any plan to make sure people aren't leaving their cars for half a day and going to work or doing something else?
I'm not sure who you're addressing that to, but the, um, you know, again, parking in downtown is not a problem, except when all the restaurants are full. So I, I, I think we're okay if, again, I mean, this is, if you, if anyone from the BBC wants to respond to that, please go ahead.
The town budget, no. I, I've heard a lot about, oh, first, the rent. What is the, the welcome center now, used to be the Bennington Police Station. And once again, the Bennington taxpayers have paid for that building since the fifties or sixties. And I know the select board used to charge the BBC a little bit for rent, and for several years, they haven't charged the BBC or who else uses that building. I really think the BBC and the others need to start paying their rent. Our town budget year just started. It has an increase of over nine percent, and I think everybody has to pay their share. I know everybody's looking for money, the same way as homeowners and people renting. And we can't continue nine percent increases, last year it was a five percent. So I think the select board really needs to figure out who's in the building and start charging them. You gotta be fair to everybody across the board. Last, I heard that this is our town and we should all be sharing information. I agree a hundred percent. And the time to share that information should have been in April twenty-twenty-one. The select board held one-twenty-minute public hearing prior to the start of the meeting. The group came in to give a big presentation on zoning changes. Each change was never mentioned, the changes weren't explained.
You're talking about the land use regulations?
Can we stick to the presentation that we just heard?
I'm sorry, Nancy.
Okay, one, one of the changes that the select board approved was throwing out the parking requirements in downtown Bennington. So a person, a property owner can now put up a huge building and does not have to provide one parking space in their lot. People who live, work, and visit Bennington are going to have cars. People don't understand what is going to be the issue with downtown Bennington in the next four or five years, if these current plans go forward. So many of the changes that they've approved, the public wouldn't have been happy about, but nobody knows.
That's about the budget, how, I'm sorry, this is a budget presentation, correct?
Yeah, I, I think this is, this is, this is probably an issue for a different day, but I will say that Bennington was ahead of the curve, and many towns are doing the same because it encourages downtown development, which is what we want. We want walkable towns where people live, work, and play. And so it encourages that. And Nancy, it was not a midnight presentation?
I would question.
There were multiple presentations. I'm gonna guess you were at them, and you know what?
No, Jeannie, in fact, in fact.
But it has nothing to do with this. It has nothing to do with this.
I would question the, the BBC supporting a downtown.
Nancy?
Knowing that parking is going to be a huge issue.
Nancy?
People are not going to be walking off the bypass to get to Bennington, or to go to that big resort up at S V C.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Yes, please.
Jack, it's like, remember your name now?
Jack Rosson, monthly, Bennington. It sounded like one of the major drivers of the change in the budget was the change in the cost of police for safety presence at events, and I'm curious what your conversations have been with the town, with the police department, and possibly with CPAR regarding that change? And just, I'm curious to know more about that, since it's such a significant change.
Yeah, so we are no different from any other organization or individual who wants to have an event, and the town policy is that if you have over seventy-five people, you have to have police presence as the security. The police get to decide how many officers are needed, and there's a three-hour minimum. So for, and when we did the budget last year, when I presented the budget, it was forty-five dollars an hour per officer, and it has gone up since, in a, in a year to now sixty-eight dollars per officer. So, for instance, Thursday Night Live, where even if I have ten people show up, we have to book the police ahead of time because we have to guess how many people are gonna be there. So sixty-eight times three, sixty-eight times three, one ninety-four, yeah, I'm a degree in math, but, so.
Yeah, I'll be more precise in my question. I understand that, I'm wondering what the conversation was about the reason for such a drastic increase in the hourly amount.
Oh, that's not a conversation for us to have. That is a union police question, it's not a BBC question. We just have to pay it. And they work with us, for sure. For Mayfest, they reduced it to three officers instead of four, and that worked out, but we have to, we have to project it for four, just in case. But if you have that question, that would have to be addressed to the police, or I don't know who decides the salary.
Well, and I would say, I mean, we spend a lot of time talking about the events policy, and the events policy was actually one of the policies that was put together by the community policing groups, and safety was paramount, and making sure that people weren't crossing streets and get, you know, and in stuff unsafe ways, and making sure that we had crowd control. So, you know, it is a bit of a, you don't know how many people are gonna show up, but you want, it's better to be safe.
Absolutely. And I mean, even though personally I feel that this is a little off of the BBC, but I, yes, we have problems in this town. Every town in the United States has problems, and probably every town in the world. However, people who perceive Bennington to be this scary, dangerous space feel better knowing that there's security in place. So I understand the police being there. I'm not fighting the police being there. I like having the police there. I was, my life was threatened at Mayfest. And I went right to Paul Doucette and asked him to go over to this vendor with me, and I did let them stay, but she literally said, if I had a gun, I would shoot her in the head because of my face.
Jenny, I'm gonna stop you.
And that's it. So we need the police to be there.
All right. All right, any other questions? We are significantly over time. Any other questions? No, then I will entertain a motion to approve the proposed DID funding for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four, if someone would like to make that motion. Okay, so moved by Jim, is there a second?
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you for everything.
Any abstentions? So again, I'm going to, okay, oh, we'll go with that. All right, thank you very much and...
Thank you both.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry that we went over, but you got a full presentation.
We all, we all participated in that going over. All right.
If I may, if I may, so I fully support this, I just think...
Sarah, Sarah, we've already voted. The time for discussion is when we ask for discussion.
So I mentioned my, my support, although, yes.
Yeah, but time for discussion is during discussion. All right. So next up is Housing Update. And Margay Diamond from, who's Executive Director at Turning Point, is doing this. We, the Housing Crisis Committee, Project Alliance, came before this group several meetings ago and we, and asked that this be, that housing be a standing agenda item, which we were very excited about. And Margay is from the group and is presenting tonight.
Thank you. So I'm Margay Diamond. I'm the Executive Director of Turning Point Recovery Center and I'm also resident of Bennington. So I am the person reporting out for the group tonight. Just so everyone is on the same page, the Homeless Crisis Subcommittee is a project within Project Alliance. This Subcommittee is comprised of 26 different agencies, including Hail Resources, BCCH, the Homeless Shelter, UCS, Turning Point, G-BICs, AIDS Project, DCF, the hospital, Medical Reserve Corps, our legislators, Mary and Dane, and Bennington College, to name a few. So it gives you a flavor of who's in the room when we're having these meetings. We had made an original proposal and had a thought that was based on the exodus of the final folks on motel vouchers August 1. There were three waves that were set to happen. So we started working and then the tables turned. And so we have made changes to our priorities based on the legislators' passage of H171-1. We have reprioritized our initiatives list and it is as follows. Local Agency Street Outreach Team and Mobile Unit Program, Motel Conversion Project, Thatcher House Transitional Housing Solution, Community Services Flyer, Phone Support Program, Recreation Center Shower Cards. I'm happy to report that two projects are complete. On July 3, the Rec Center Shower Cards Program went live. Special thanks to Dee from the Medical Reserve Corps and Susan Skorbody from Bennington College for working with the Rec Center, raising private donation funds for the showers and essentials, soap and shampoo and towels. This has been posted on most organizations' social media sites and circulated, but will continue to circulate that. All people need to do is go to the Rec Center and ask during open hours for the shower program. And they'll get a punch card and they'll get a little caddy with the things they need and on they go. So normally there's a fee for days of the shower, but we've covered that with a donation and prepaid what we think will probably hold us through the summer. The other project was a consolidated resource list and I don't know, but we all have our own brochures, right? So when we deliver information, our harm reduction bags have had like 20 brochures in them for a while. That was a lot of brochures. So we have just shrunk that down, tried to make a consolidated list. Kelly Carroll is jumping in to help laminate it so it can live outside and not get wet and die. And there'll probably be a couple more iterations of this, but it's a really clean, easy-to-read go-to map for people. So we're eager to get that out and about. We're also going to be fundraising, if you will, for donated supplies. We have had some donors who stepped up and given us some funds to purchase those things, but we're going to be asking the community to see if anybody's willing to chip in on some of those toiletry necessities. There is a third initiative, Well Underway, which is the motel and street outreach. That is a joint effort between Turning Point and United Counseling Services. We've been doing it together since December, honestly. We have been flooding the motels with Narcan and well checks. That was the point at that time because we thought everyone was going to be punted out early. So we were just focusing on those critical pieces. Outreach is now targeting not just the motel voucher folks, but we're also spreading out into encampments and street outreach. Turning Point and UCS remain the anchor agencies, but we will be joined by the AIDS Project, Strange Services, and a Public Health Nurse. BCCH, the Homeless Shelter, has gotten grant funding for a full-time community outreach coordinator to work with the homeless population at motels and on the streets. This position is currently being interviewed for and it'll be filled by the end of July and that person will join our outreach team. Our goals right now are to ensure that every resident has received the letter from the state. Those are just going out. They've been posted to the state's website, but it is the instructions for people currently receiving motel vouchers about how to continue and be able to stay until the April date. It's not automatic. They have to take steps. They have to recertify. They have to pull out credentials. So it's kind of like they've got to do the whole process again. And our fear is that because a large number of people that are still in motels have disabilities, I don't know, they range the gamut. But literacy is sometimes challenging for various populations and we want to be sensitive to that. So part of our role is to really walk them through the steps to make sure they're good where they are. So we want to prevent any disruptions there. And then we want to connect them to the right agency, whatever that next step is. Make sure they have a phone. Is there some way we can help them get connected? And then we're also looking and listening for what their stated primary need is. We're coming in like housing first, right? But we may encounter someone who needs medical attention at the hospital or who has a different kind of legal problem that they're searching for help with. Whatever the client feels is their primary need, we want to see if we can connect them to an organization to address that. So we're going to continue to offer harm reduction supplies and connections to supports. We're really excited about being able to have somebody do some medical care and those nurses will be coming from various different places. G-BICs, Natalie thinks she can get a couple people to come with us. We've also got some folks from the Medical Reserve Corps and Rescue and potentially the hospital. So it may be kind of a rotating position, but I think it's really important to have nursing care. So from my vantage point and the lens that I work in every day, which is obviously drugs and alcohol, Xylazine is a come-in and we've been talking about it for a while. This is the new adulterant to the drug supply. It has been around for a long time, but it's become quite prevalent in Philly. It's marching its way up here. The last stats that I looked at, it was in like 75% of the supply that was tested last month in Brattleboro. So it is here. And the problem with Xylazine is it's a veterinary medication. It's not meant for human consumption. And so people are getting these really horrid, oozy boo-boos, like not in the spot they're injecting in. And some of them are getting it even if they're snorting something or doing it in a different way. So this Xylazine is being put in on top of fentanyl, on top of crack, on top of everything. And it cannot be reversed with Narcan because it isn't an opioid. It's a horse tranquilizer. So, but these boo-boos are very concerning because they show up in random spots, people don't make the connection, and they will not heal on their own. And in fact, that skin tissue is going to die. And they, in a lot of other areas, people are having limbs amputated. So we want to get to the stuff and head it off at the pass. When we see these things, and we're going to see them, we just need to have somebody who knows how to patch someone up and what the next rate step is so that we don't see a lot of the stuff pushing into the emergency room as a crisis. Let's see here. Oh, I wanted to also let you know that UCS and Turning Point filed for grant funding on behalf of the team. We've had one meeting already and we have another this week, so we should find out whether we're getting some support. We expect we will, just the amount's a little up in the air. And BCCH just received a $5,000 grant specific to purchasing easy-to-prepare food for homeless camping folks, people in motels only have a microwave. So we are making headway with funding in these areas and hopefully to do this, of course, in a sustainable way. We continue to meet weekly and we're making solid progress towards some innovative solutions that should have longer-term impact. More on this next time. Our overarching goal is to provide supportive wraparound services and ensure that as many people as possible get permanent housing and can thrive. We want to really thank the Town of Bennington and the Select Board for being supportive and actively engaging on many of these initiatives. And we look forward to updating you again.
Wonderful. Any questions from Margay? No? Any from the audience? Yes, Nancy, please come up.
Please explain how the Alliance got permission to do this without coming before the Select Board.
The YMCA manages the Recreation Center and so it was up to the YMCA to talk to the group.
The YMCA doesn't, the YMCA doesn't own the Rec Center.
Nancy, you asked a question and it just got answered.
So the YMCA, who we're paying a ton of money to, who does not turn the money over to the Town Office for our pool and Rec Center despite you telling us they were going to, our Rec Center is not a Y facility.
Nancy, I think we've told you this before. Well, I don't even think. We have told you this so many times. We have an agreement with the YMCA. If they make more money than, there is a management agreement. If they make more money than the management agreement, then they, then we do not pay them. They subtract that from what we have. So we pay them a fraction of what we paid when we ran the Rec Center ourselves. But beyond that, Nancy, which is off-topic, you asked a question and it was answered.
I think the people of Bennington need to under, well, your agreement ended last October. It was a three-year agreement. There has been no new agreement signed.
Nancy, this is not public comment.
Oh, I, I think the people of Bennington and anybody...
Do you have a question from Margay? Do you have a question on the housing?
Sure, I'll, I'll remind you. The taxpayers of Bennington own that Rec Center, not the YMCA. It is not a YMCA facility. None of this was ever discussed before you gave the Y the agreement. So I don't understand how we can have a YMCA going behind our backs, making all these deals.
Nancy, you, we have a management agreement, they manage the Y, they manage the Rec Center, and they make those decisions. So you, that's asked and answered.
So is the, is the Alliance doing anything in any other town in Bennington County or is it all...
So the project, so I, I think you are here for this meeting, I am quite sure. Project Alliance is a program that Bennington, Town of Bennington, organizations and agencies came together and rather than working separately, we are working together. Select, I sit on that, I sit on that committee. Town staff work with that committee. We have legislators on that committee. The Chair of the CPAR is on that committee. There are also 24 service organizations on that committee. So it is a Bennington County, but largely Bennington-focused because that is where the social service organizations are. And, and because of that, that is where individuals are, are living in hotels because, and motels because you need to be close to services in order to access the services. So beyond that, Nancy, it is a, it is a broad coalition. It has the Christ, the Housing Crisis Group has done a lot of good work in very short order. We do meet every single week and there are people who are spending huge amounts of time, like Turning Point, who are, you know, doing good things for our community. So Nancy, this is not a time for you to decide for you...
Well, I think, I think it's a shame for all the support the people of Bennington have been giving these groups many for years or decades when we vote in favor of your organizations and you don't think the public should have a say before you push these programs forward. It'll be interesting next year at voting time for March.
Thank you. You have a question from Margay?
On behalf of Jeanne and our President Susan and myself, since Turning Point was part of our DID family and they had to move to expand, we would like to just extend a free membership to the BBC and we will help get the word out however you need. So please get in touch with us and we will help cross-promote everything you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny.
Any other questions? Yes, Asher. Oh. Okay. Mary Ellen, and then Asher?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Mary Ellen Munley and I'm a citizen of, I'm resident of Bennington. And I just want to say to Margay and to the, to the group and conversation that I, I had with John Rogers, I think this is exactly the kind of work that we as citizens want to have happen in our community, that the organizations that we entrust and the work that they're doing for them to coordinate their activities to be able to get a greater effort and more attention to a problem like homelessness that we have in this community. It's exactly the way we hope the community will operate and I just want to thank them and, and to say that, you know, if there's anything that either the Community Cafe or the Bennington Cares can do to help in those efforts, we're right there and we are not an official part of the Alliance, we don't need to be. But being able to talk with these folks and to see where all the connections can be made on behalf of residents, other residents of our community is just such an important thing and I'm so glad we're talking about it over and over and over again. We need to.
Thank you. Asher?
Hi there. Asher Edelson, Bennington. I'm really glad to hear about the work that Project Alliance is doing in conjunction with the Town of Bennington. My question is regarding the shower program. You mentioned that donations fuel the shower program for folks experiencing homelessness. My question is, how long do you expect that program will last considering the donations and the volume of folks that utilize the program? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. We have no idea how many people are going to use it, right? It was a spitball guess. I believe a little over $1,000 has been provided for showers. And if that money drains down and we're close to running out, we will refuel with another donor. Bennington College has been pretty good about this. They have some individual major donors that they're able to tap for things like this. So we don't think a second round will be a problem at all, but we're going to keep taps on it.
And Margay, is $3 a shower? Is that...
Right.
And you have $1,000?
Okay. Right.
You're welcome.
And I just wanted to make a quick mention before I step off the podium. I was supposed to announce to all of you that the Bennington County for the Coalition is having their annual meeting and it's on Zoom. It's July 25 at 6:30. If you'd like an invite, you can email the director at bcchvt.org for the invite.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next up is the Bennington Free Library Reading, Summer Reading Program. Linda, you guys, come on up. Thank you for your patience. I'm happy for that.
We need pockets.
Turn around so Cat TV can see too. Thanks.
I'm Linda Donigan. I'm one of the youth services librarians at Bennington Free Library. And this is my new colleague, Jonna Fredrickson. And Jonna's going to introduce herself and talk about libraries a little bit.
As Linda said, my name is Jonna Fredrickson and I moved to Vermont about 10 months ago from Massachusetts.
Yay!
Yeah, not many people say that when they find out I'm from Massachusetts. Thank you. But very happy to be at the Bennington Free Library, coming from the Wareham Free Library. And Wareham is a town very similar to Bennington, but instead of having mountains and ocean. So very similar. And also a great need for libraries and, and like... And like Bennington has a fantastic library. I was amazed when I showed up to the Bennington Free Library to see all of the work that is being done with the support, obviously, of the town and of the town leadership. The library, obviously, is for people to take out books, which everybody knows that, but it's really a little bit more than that. It's really about fostering the inner person as well as sort of the outer person. And after a pandemic, we kind of realized how important both of those things are. So if you go visit the Bennington Free Library on Silver Street, there are resources for sort of expanding who you are, books, programs, all kinds of stuff like that. And for the outer sort of growth, we are working with children mostly and it's an amazing thing to watch an infant grow into a full adult and go through all those ages and stages. And then to continue on to do that, because it's not like we stop growing at age 18 or 20. We continue to grow. And the Bennington Free Library is a big part of helping out with that. Some of the things that happen in the library that you may know, a lot of groups visit the library. We had 12 kids come unexpectedly two weeks in a row of different groups, like, oh, okay, for summer programs. Right now, there's an ongoing art show. So if you want to take a look at some lovely pieces of art or even purchase one, you can go right into the library and see that. There are ongoing discussion groups, including the Vermont Reads book, which is, that's happened at the library as well as other places. And online resources, which have been so important during the pandemic, but now are still important. So if you can't quite make it physically, you can make it in a virtual sense to get some of those resources. And the library itself, with its staff, really fosters sort of a lifetime of adventure and growth, which is a great thing. So you can show up just for fun or you can show up to do research and you'll always find a very welcome place and people who are competent and will help you and treat you with dignity and be very kind, which is a great thing. But the library doesn't stay in the building on Silver Street. It also goes out into the community. My first, actually, it was before I first started, the night before I started my official job, I went to a middle school program, an author event that the Bennington Free Library had sponsored for the middle school kids. And there's a lot of connection between all of the schools and their programs and the sources at the library. The first day I started, I started at the Bennington Museum. So my first day, I didn't go to the library first. And that was a program that involved the library, the museum, and kindergarteners. So there's a lot of interplay so that the people of Bennington are really getting the benefit of a lot of different institutions working together so that you have this lovely experience that promotes growth and promotes communal connection. Head Start Celebration, which I saw some people at the Head Start Celebration, was another thing that the Bennington Free Library shows up to along with everyone else. And it was a great opportunity to see how we connect with other institutions in the town. Vermont Arts Council was something else that I went to that was held at the museum to talk about how it is that libraries and schools and other institutions promote a sort of growth, not just, I need to get these things done, but we want to have something beautiful and meaningful in our lives as well. ECDC, if you're looking at resettling of people from all over the world, not just Ethiopia, and the language and culture that comes with that that is rich. And how do we not only welcome different people of different cultures into our town, but also how do we really understand the gift that they bring? So that we're not just thinking that, oh, we're helping, they're also going to enrich our lives. And then Vermont Reads, which I mentioned. And when I walked up to work last week, there was somebody weeding the garden beds and, which is, you know, I said, oh, hi, that's very nice. Thank you. He says, oh, yeah, I'm with the Master Gardener Program. So there's a lot of interplay. And he didn't seem to think that was a strange thing to show up at the library. So all of these things really help us as a community, sort of grow as individuals and keep those connections going. So, yeah, that's the library in general. And now we're going to go with the summer program.
It's always so interesting to get an outside perspective. And I appreciate Jonna's perspective because she's coming from a different life experience. And we are real crossroads. Our community offers a welcome to people from bordering states, from different countries. And in that light, the summer reading program is All Together Now. And so each of you has your own packet. You can keep track of your reading if you'd like. And we wanted you to see what kids are receiving when they come in to sign up for summer reading. They get stickers, they get reading records, they get bookmarks, they get a way to keep track of their reading. All Together Now is the perfect slogan in our minds for this time because it's centered around kindness, friendship, and unity. Now, who's going to argue with that? But embracing that, fostering that, nurturing that is our job. And it's a big job. We do that by offering many programs, particularly in the summer, for not only kids, but for families to be together. And as we well know, families have changed. We see grandparents a lot. We see aunts and uncles taking responsibility. We see families coming together in different ways. And accepting and welcoming is part of our job. When kids come into the children's room, they can sign up for summer reading. This will go on all through July. So if you haven't signed up, now is the time. Storytime, you know, is kind of a hallmark of libraries. And we have a great summer reading storytime. Music and art and nature and science are all part of it. All Together Now Yoga. Yoga's All the Rage, including for two-year-olds. We, I'm doing two-year-old, two-to-six-year-old yoga with a wonderful instructor, Zoe Shaheen, every Thursday. It's a riot. And The Banner actually did some nice coverage of it. I hope that everybody got to see that. Puppet Palooza is this Wednesday for older kids. And Check It Out Chess. We've been running these wonderful chess programs all winter and it kind of mushroomed with Trevor Plisga, who is this young chess coach who's just dynamite. And it's, he's now started after-school programs. And I got, we got funding from the Southshire Fund from the Vermont Community Foundation to run a chess camp for one week this summer. And we did it last week. And to see little kids sit their fannies in a chair for two hours and not move except to get snacks, it was very impressive. It was, it was just great. So, and it's, it really has attracted kids from all different families, all different backgrounds. And it's just a wonderful thing to see. We had Southern Vermont Natural History Museum came today and what do you think? 125 people showed up. That's a lot for Bennington in the library. But they brought owls and--
Tree toads.
A snake. The snake was good. And we had a great time. But they spoke about our wild community. And no matter if you're living in town or you're living, you know, out at the end of a dirt road, we are living in a wild community. We see tree toads, we know snakes, and we want kids to be comfortable outdoors as well as indoors. So we like to bring the outdoors in for them. Use Your Words World Language Weekly Challenges. We live in a global world. Kids really consider themselves global citizens. You talk to little kids and they're always talking about different countries and a show they watched on television or a movie that they watched. And their references are so broad. They're global. So each week, we have a different challenge. This week, it is--
How are you?
Right. They have to say it in a language other than their own. And if they do, they get a little prize. But as a result, kids are taking out language books like crazy. And so it's really fun to see. They want to show us that they are in touch with a world that is broader than the one that they live in. So Jonna's going to talk about some of the other things that we are doing.
For the non, you know, sort of kid set, we also have summer reading for adults and high school students. So if you go in to the reference section and you can say, hello, how are you? Or my name is, or alphabet, numbers, days of the week, months of the year, in a language that is not your own, you get to put an entry in for raffle prizes. And you can look up the beautiful ceiling while you're doing that. And so that's going on, on going through this program. And we talked about Check It Out Chess. One of the things, one of the former Storytime students of Linda's, who was going to Georgetown in the fall, came in and said, hey, I'd like to do something for the summer because he doesn't have quite enough time to get a job. So he's going to be doing, Percy Jackson's A Demigod's Guide to Mythology. So he's going to have a bunch of kids come in and they're just going to discuss this book, read it through, and talk about ancient mythology. So, which was a lovely surprise.
Yeah.
Did the Wild Community Day. An ongoing thing for some of us here is Food and Friends. This is something we're having cooking adventures for fourth to seventh graders. And we're basically eating food, but we're preparing it first. So last week, we did appetizers. So how do you make a cheese tray? And how do you make pesto? This week, it is flatbread pizzas. So if you happen to sort of swan by the Rotary Room at about 10 of 3 tomorrow, you can just sort of come in and have a flatbread pizza. And, yeah, so those are some of the other programs that are going on.
And in your packets, you'll see a person and a hand. And sort of going along with All Together Now and Hands Around the World, kids can come in and you can decorate your hand or your person and add it to the beauty of the children's room. And we've gone through quite a bit of bling at this point.
You have some bling in your kit too, so--
Yes. So we invite you to decorate a hand or a person and we will add it to our display.
Yeah.
Any questions? Anyone have any questions?
I have a comment. A number of years ago-- We won't go into what number. I participated in the summer reading program at the library and I'm just so happy that it's still going on.
I wasn't a librarian, but I--
I remember what a great program it was and, you know, you got prizes and everything, and that was cool. But to continue to incentivize kids to read throughout the summer is just so critical. And I just want to thank you guys for keeping this program going.
You're welcome.
Lovely. Yes, Jeannie?
As you were talking, I don't know what made me think of this, but I was wondering, as librarians, and maybe not even just in our library, but in libraries anywhere, when children come to a library with a parent, a grandparent, an aunt or an uncle who possibly hasn't spent much time in libraries themselves, or when they were children, their library wasn't nearly as much fun as they are now, do the adults become more engaged because the child has got them in the door?
Yes.
I thought that would be the case.
Yes. I mean, that's the case in museums, that's the case in any institution, because you see the wonder, as Jonna said, the adventure. And that's one reason why we're really devoted to having a really interactive space, because we're not just trying to capture the attention of the little ones. We're trying to help the grown-ups engage, to interact with their children, not just be on their phones. But we say, this is a space for you all to play and learn together. So in that way, it helps to break some of the hesitation that a grown-up might have.
And do they also participate in programming that is for adults on their own? Maybe not as much?
You mean patrons who are introduced--
Like, the child in their life got them in the door and they're involved with the child during, you know, for the children's activities, but then, hey, do they go, oh, I should, I want to go to that discussion group that's not for children, but it's for adults? It's just, I never thought about the connection and it's really, really powerful.
Well, when you make the connection in both the children's room and with the adult reference librarian to promote these language challenges, which we have worked with Jack to try to organize that as well, then you get that bounce back. Oh, there's something for mommy or daddy to do.
Right.
Yes.
Right.
So we try to, we try to coordinate and send a supportive message to all ages.
Sometimes it's just that child that gets them in the door. It's lovely. Any questions from the audience? No?
It was lovely to hear what you guys are up to. It's a lot. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. We're having fun.
Yeah.
So bring your, bring your person or your hand.
Or yourselves, yeah.
Well, you can still contribute to summer reading. Do your part.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glad to be here. All right. Next on our agenda is sort of an unfortunate thing we have to do. So Bennington Housing Authority modification of appointment. So the unfortunate situation is that we had the opportunity to interview and appoint two great people to the Housing Authority, one to the community seat and one to the tenant seat. So it turns out that there were not two openings on the Housing Authority. Only the open seat was available, not the tenant seat. So that means that Nancy Balkonis, who was appointed to the community seat, would stay, but we have one too many people for the tenant seat. So we actually have to resend the appointment of Scott Fox to the tenant seat. So we did check with HUD to see if we could increase the number of seats. The federal government does not like make, yeah. So they had rules and they said, no. So there are five seats, five years, that's it. And if a tenant leaves that seat during the five years, they still can stay on that, in that seat for the full five years. So, which contributed to the mix-up. So for those of us who were able to interview the candidates for the Housing Authority, particularly Scott and Nancy, can someone make a motion to resend with regret the appointment of Scott Fox to the Housing Authority?
I can make that motion.
Thank you.
With regret.
All right. All right. So, so for those of us who can vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 With regret.
Yeah. Any opposed?
No.
And one abstention?
Abstaining.
Yeah. Okay.
Jeanie, do we know what we can do to avoid that mix-up?
Yeah. So I actually had a meeting today with, with the director to make sure that we all know the process.
Great.
And yeah. It was a learning, it was a learning--
Thank you.
--process for all of us. So very sorry for that. All right. Implementing the Town Vision. Tom, I'll turn it to you.
All right. It's become tradition that our CPARB Chair, Kelly Carroll, comes in and gives us a bit of an update. Tonight's no different. So Kelly?
Hi, Kelly Carroll from Bennington, Chair of Bennington's Community Policing Advisory Review Board. And Tom had asked me just to give you a quick update on our listening session that we had on June 29. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that came and attended, or either submitted a comment, or spoke, or watched the video. So thank you very much. We had about 25 people attend. We had about 10 people that chose to speak. And we received three written comments from our website, which we read during that. We will go into more detail about what we, what we heard and our plans for the next step during our meeting on July 20 in this room at 6:00 PM. But we got some comments about mental health trauma in our community. We received encouragement to continue to reach out and seek input from different organizations, agencies, and demographics. We heard support of BPD and understanding that they're short-staffed. We heard comments about the lack of diversity on our board and in the listening session. We heard that BPD and CPARB should support continuous improvement. We heard about the closing of People's Park. We had people wanting to know what the town is doing for housing for the homeless, the lack of public restrooms downtown. The portrayal of criminal defendants in handcuffs by the media was mentioned. Societal issues criminalizing domestic abuse and children's difficulties in school by having police respond to calls in the home or school. We were encouraged to take a broader look at problems and not look at them simply as crimes, but as community problems. We heard comments around developing collaborative community partnerships to build trust. How CPARB's work should encourage empathy and understanding over fear. We should be encouraging the empowerment of frontline officers through the development of an engaging problem-solving process that has the organizational structure to support and encourage the process. We heard about the importance of community involvement. We were encouraged to reach out to different members of the BIPOC community, different demographics, different agencies and organizations, such as NAMI, the National Association for Mentally Ill. The community also told CPARB to make sure that we ask out to them for, reach out to them for help when we need it. We heard a lot of community support for the Bennington Police Department. We heard appreciation for the new experience camp, which I believe is this week. People understand that the department is short-staffed, but we also heard concerns about rising crime and the unintentional blowback that having a board such as CPARB may unintentionally cause. A lot of these comments that came out are really outside of CPARB's direct charge. But one thing that CPARB is tasked with is fostering collaborative efforts within the community to hear all voices, and that was one reason for the listening session. That is one reason that we have guest speakers at our monthly meeting. The Center for Restorative Justice will be our July guest. Last month, Lorna Matern from United Counseling Services came to speak about the collaboration between UCS and BPD. Collaboration and support, not only for BPD officers and staff, because healthy officers make healthy decisions, but also for mental health support during those crisis community calls in hopes of de-escalating situations wherever possible. So during the listening session, we heard common themes. Community mental health trauma and the need for more mental health support and services. More communication, more education and collaboration. And appreciation for BPD and what they do for our community. We all want a better Bennington. The listening session, it was difficult not to reply or ask questions. There was one comment that someone wasn't really sure of the purpose. So we tried to explain that that was, this was more like a data collection for us. I did say our next meeting will be July 20. CRJ will be our guest. We heard interest in this at the listening session, people saying, take a look at crimes differently, giving people second chances, and possible alternatives to the criminal justice system is what CRJ does in conjunction with the criminal justice system, but they do a great job. And Chief Doucette is also going to be speaking about some new Vermont legislation requiring the use of soft restraints as opposed to handcuffs when applicable for mental health calls. So, you know, we heard collaboration, we heard communication, we heard education. And that's what we're trying to do with our meeting. So we will be discussing the meeting a little bit more in detail with what our next steps are. But just remember that collaboration, communication, education, and always, always, always at our meetings, public comment. So that's tonight. So anyway, any questions or anything I missed for those of you that were there? Thank you.
I just want to make a comment, Kelly. It was a great evening. I know that, that not everybody knew what to expect. I would encourage you and your group to continue doing it on a regular basis. The idea that you, you held a specific, a meeting for the specific reason of listening to people, the more often you do it, maybe it's quarterly, maybe it's twice a year, the more you do it, the more people will know that it's a realistic outlet, and their input and feedback will, will go somewhere if it's appropriate. I think it's, it's, it's really good community outreach. And I thank you for doing it.
Thank you. And thank you to the rest of CPARB, too. Because it was a, you know, it's a group effort. The board, the board works well together.
Yeah. I think it was an excellent session. And I, you know, and I think that the more you do it, the more people will know what to expect. But I think for the most part, people did come, understanding that you were going to listen. And you, and you did do that, which was really wonderful.
It was hard not--
It's hard not--
It's hard not-- Because if somebody has a question, you want to answer the question, you know? Or, you know, if somebody wants to ask a question. But yeah, it was, we really appreciate the, the community involvement on that. So thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The manager's report.
Okay. Couple of quick things this evening. Just want to announce that the new household hazardous waste facility will be open at the transfer station probably the end of this month, if not the first of August, the first week in August at the latest. It will be open on Mondays by appointment. There will be a $5 fee per vehicle that will be charged for drop-offs of materials. So this will, this will change our normal way of doing household hazardous waste, which was having one or two events each year where everybody had to cram in and try to get, take advantage of those one or two days to get rid of their household hazardous waste. This will be four times a month, nominal fee, and we hope that it'll be convenient for folks, and that it will result in a lot less hazardous materials ending up in the wrong places. So that is happening. And we thank the folks at the Bennington County Regional Commission and the Bennington County Solid Waste Alliance for making that happen. Just wanted to give a quick update on the People's Park. As you know, we did reopen recently. The PD has been engaging with folks down there. And what they found is a pattern where there's, the majority of the people just want to hang out and enjoy themselves and enjoy the company of others. But there is a persistent group of folks who are causing trouble, either alcohol abuse, drug sales, drug use, inappropriate behavior. And those folks are being dealt with. I will say that the PD is building a relationship with the folks that do want to behave and enjoy that facility. And most of the, most of the arrests and other incidents that have occurred there have come through complaints from the folks who are using the facility, who just want to be able to enjoy it without the inappropriate behavior there. So I think that our goal of resetting expectation for behavior is occurring. And folks that just want to enjoy the park are feeling empowered and are working with the police department to make it a better place for them, too. So we hope that that continues and that the inappropriate behavior continues to decrease over time. That's all I have this evening.
Can I ask you about the ADA push?
Sure, sure. So I know that you asked last time, Jeanie, about the ADA accessible door with the push button. I know that I talked to Paul Danzera, our facilities director, that that equipment is on its way, and we're just trying to coordinate installation. So that will be installed.
Thank you.
I don't know when. Paul didn't want to promise, given that we don't have a commitment from the contractor yet. But once we do, I'll let you know.
Did you have a question, Jean?
No.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Dan, you may not know the answer to this. Is, is there any way in the future the hazardous waste facility could be open on a Saturday every now and then? Monday's a really tough day for many, many, many people to get to the transfer station, myself included.
Well, I think if you have that recommendation, you should let BRCRC or the Bennington County--
Okay.
--Solid Waste folks.
Take it up with them.
Let them know that, hey, Monday's not working for a lot of people.
They've got to know that.
Excuse me?
It seems like they've got to realize that Mondays are not a great day.
Yeah. I think it has to do with staffing--
Right.
--et cetera. So maybe it's once a month--
Exactly.
--they can be open on a Saturday.
Even once every couple of months.
Again, that's funded by a coalition of 13 towns. The town, the Bennington, does not control that. But I think it's perfectly appropriate to let the folks know.
Should I do it personally, or should we do it as a board?
That's up to you folks.
Okay.
But, you know, that's certainly how you would do it. I mean, you can do it personally. They're pretty responsive. You know the folks there.
Yeah. Yeah.
But again, the town does not control that. I don't know if the funding is in place for that. But that's certainly something that we could check with the--
I mean, Jean, are you willing to do some fact-finding?
Sure.
Find out why--
I could even--
Why it's a Monday?
And I could draft a letter, and we could all sign it or something like that. Okay. Yeah.
I would just, I, just a phone call to Scott at the Regional Commission. He could get all the information you need, and we could go from there.
Scott?
Yep.
Don't know Scott.
BRCRC.
I don't know Scott.
He's new.
Guess so.
New-ish.
Well, sort of new-ish. Yeah. Yeah. New-ish.
Quickly, Dan, we looked like we dodged the bullet mainly, maybe on this, the majority of the storm. And my heart certainly goes out to those folks where that roar severely flooded. Was there any kind of flooding problems in town that you're aware of?
So it's not over yet, but it looks like we're headed out of this storm without any, any damage in Bennington of any, of any significant nature. Unfortunately, communities around us did suffer some damage. Clarksburg, Mass, I know, had some significant damage. North Adams. Obviously, the folks in around Ludlow and Weston had lots and lots of problems. But, and Wilmington, I know, they had to close Route 9 this evening. I don't know the extent of the damage, if there's any permanent damage, or it's just water on the roadway. So yes, we, we did dodge a bullet, for sure. The PD was prepared and ready if we did, if we did start to suffer any significant flooding. But we, we were lucky this time.
Good. All right. All right. With that, so manager's report is not, is not a question and answer.
The answer is no.
So do you want to make a comment about the flood wall that, that came up? I mean, we have a flood wall.
We have a flood wall. It's inspected every year by the Corps of Engineers.
Okay. All right. So, okay. So duly noted. All right. Thank you. All right. Upcoming agendas. Two things I have are Ben O staff are coming to talk to us at the next meeting on their diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives this year. They've done an amazing job, and some of it was on display at Juneteenth. So they're going to come do a PowerPoint for us. And then we will be moving forward with the Purple Heart Proclamation, which is in August each year. So we will, that will be on the next agenda, because the date for the Purple Heart Proclamation will be passed by our August meeting, I think. Okay. I'm not aware of anything else. Yeah?
I just have a question. I seem to remember way back, maybe a few years ago, when we started the Vermont Begins Here--
Mm-hmm.
802--
Yeah.
Website, whatever we're calling it. We were going to hear data about--
Good point.
--that. And I know COVID hit, so I'm not sure how reliable, if it's, if it's been enough, enough time to extrapolate meaningful data yet? I don't know how long these things take.
Well, let's see. 802 runs, marketing must be running analytics on.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a great, so we'll check with them to bring them in. If not this next meeting--
Yeah.
--then soon.
I forgot about it. And I read Shannon's report.
No, that's a very--
I was like, oh, yeah.
Thank you for saying that. And also, I think the Bennington Police Department should be coming soon as well. I'm not sure when their quarter comes up. Anything else that is on the horizon that you should be thinking about? All right. All right. Other business. Sarah, anything?
Done.
Okay.
I'm unprepared.
That's a no?
I guess that's a no.
Okay. That's a no. Okay. So do we, let's see. Okay. So yeah, so we just need a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. Good. Thank you all.